Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. It is March 1st, 2018. This is the meeting that was scheduled for February 25th. And due to the fact there were so many people away, it was bumped up to Thursday, March 1st. March 12th, we'll be back on regular schedule. The mayor's not here tonight. I'm Dave Barris, deputy mayor. I'll be hosting the meeting. And the CAO, David Calder, is not able to make it tonight. So David Rushton has sat in and he's acting CAO. So we've already went into open, I'm sorry, closed sessions. So we have opened our meeting and we came out. So we're resuming our regular session. So right now, we'll ask councillor Rosehart, I'm sorry councillor Esseltime, for the resolution for the agenda adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Stevenson, that the agenda is prepared for the council meeting of Thursday, March 1st, 2018 be adopted.
Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. Disclosure of peculiary interest, general nature thereof. And nothing declared. So the adoption of the council minutes from February 12th, 2018. Councillor Esseltime.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Stevenson, that the minutes of the council meeting of February 12th, 2018 be approved.
Questions, comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, we'll go on. We have nothing in delegations and presentations this evening. But we are going to go on for committee reports and presentations. Tilsenberg has been, town has been asked by the chamber to look after, or at least coordinate, the Citizen of the Year presentation. And tonight, we're privileged to have the chair of our special awards committee with us, Mr. Matt Schultz. And Matt is going to be here. And he's got a few comments that he'd like to make to council. Yeah, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Probably the mic straight up will give you a better view.
This way?
Straight up to the screen.
Oh, there it is?
Higher, yeah. Straight up.
Up yours, is that what you're saying? Counselor members are aware that the Kellogg's plant was closed in London. And they, last week, they were tearing apart of it down. And they found a dead body. And the police think it was a serial killer. Moving along with our show. I did want to take the opportunity to thank town council for the dog park. I'm not a dog owner, but do dogs sit from time to time once the friends of ours are away? And I used a park with a dog a while ago, one weekend ago, a while ago. And there is one thing missing from the dog park. It needs a fire hydrant. Moving along with our show. I did want to take the opportunity to thank town council for the dog park. I'm not a dog owner, but do dogs sit from time to time once the friends of my owners are away? And I used the park with the dog a little while ago, one weekend ago, a while ago. And there is one thing missing from the dog park. It needs a fire hydrant. The Citizen of the Year. In 1979, I was the chamber secretary. And I proposed to the Chamber of Commerce that they adopt the Citizen of the Year award. And they did so. I did that award for almost 30 years. And I retired, and I thought I'd seen the last of it. And now it's come back to haunt me. Here I am again, running the Citizen of the Year.
You've done well, so maybe that's why they won't retire you.
You just can't retire anymore. So you have the report. I want to draw attention to one of the dots. The committee will be the decision-making body for determination of the award winner, including if necessary. I know the council works with lightning speed. And the council normally waits for committees to make recommendations for approval of the minutes and decisions. But in this particular case, the committee needs, can't wait a month or whatever, to announce that decision. It's important that the committee have the right to make that announcement as soon as possible. You can't let, some planning is required. The word will get out even before, likely, before council gets to it. So for that reason, the committee would like to have the right to make that announcement without referral to council. Now, the next issue is what if a citizen of the year has to be withdrawn, or sort of deleted? And there have been two of them in the past. I'm not sure about this one. This is more of a political issue. Whether council wants to retain the right to eliminate, withdraw, or take back the reward for somebody, or leave it with the committee. So that's something I think the council may need to consider. The committee felt that we should have the right to do so. In this particular case, it's not a whole lot of urgency. And again, it's a political issue. And I think I'd like to have some guidance from council on that issue. And the last item is, our committee does not have a budget, thank goodness. But this one does require some expenditure. And in that respect, the committee would like to have a budget of $1,000, at least for the first year, to kind of seed money. We're not sure if it would be less or more. But I think in succeeding years, once we have at least one year under our belt, we can decide, we can determine just how much our expenses really are. And then going forward, we can give a realistic figure. So at this point, $1,000 is a ballpark figure. You can make a half a million if you want. But I think $1,000 bucks might be enough to get going. With the provision that, what if we go over a little bit? It would be nice to have some leeway. So are there any questions from council members?
Are there any questions to Matt? Councillor Esseltime.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'll throw you to Mr. Schultz. So Matt, the one thing in the report here that I wondered what you were referring to is, reads notwithstanding the committee's selection responsibility of an annual winner, the council for the town of Tilsenberg have ultimate discretion on the program and any existing award winners. So that, is that with reference then to what you were saying about names being removed from the town's list of Citizen of the Year? Is that what that's with reference to then?
Based on the experience with the Citizen of the Year award, there have been two incidents where the award has had to be withdrawn.
Okay.
So based on that experience, going forward, council needs to have that kind of knowledge, that it's a possibility. And if that's the case, then how is it handled?
Okay. And so you were questioning whether that would be the committee's responsibility or council's responsibility in determining that sort of thing?
The withdrawal of a one, yes.
Yes, okay.
As I mentioned, that's more of a political thing. The making of selection is more of a citizen thing, whereas the other one is a little more dicey.
Okay.
And again, leave it to council. I'm sorry about two minds about it.
Okay. And then also then in the list of things here, we've got, continue on with the plaque recognition program?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to, I'll mention that. That's not exactly correct. It's a block. The cement, the paving stone blocks in front of the library.
They have.
That's what it really, there's a bit of a misnomer in that respect. And I'm sorry, I did make a note that I should have touched on that issue.
Okay, that's okay. So there are bricks, or some, in front of the library that recognize citizens?
The Chamber of Commerce felt that as years went by, there should be some way of recognizing those who have gone. And then already become citizens. And the best place seemed to be at the library, the paving stones. In that connection, I congratulate Brian Stevenson. He's the one who suggested it. And his name is one of them. Incidentally, in terms of the credentials that are our committee for this award, Citizen of the Year, half of them are past members, so they know what they're doing. It's ironic that half of them are that. So we have a couple of interests. The only one that's not is myself and Steve Mulder. I guess we're still working, we're a work in progress.
All right, very well. Other questions? My question, Mr. Rushton, are you, do you think we can find $1,000 from the organization?
That's American.
We currently funded this year $359, so we're looking at another 650. And if I dig deep enough, I can probably find it.
You'll probably find it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's good news. And I'm assuming those numbers came from past experience as far as spending goes?
Yes, yeah.
Or what's been done? I believe that was in the report. Okay. Okay, with that said, any more comments or questions? I think what's being, in my opinion, what's being requested here is extremely reasonable and appreciated that the committee has come forward in doing the work that you're doing. It's a tough decision because there's a lot of people out there that are deserving of this. And it must be very difficult for you. It's like Oscar and I, I suppose, you can only have so many winners. But there are other years too that they could be thanked for what they do. Do you have a resolution, councillor Esseltime?
I do know. It does not refer to the question Mr. Schultz posed about who has the ultimate discretion on the program and the existing award winners. And should that be mentioned in, are we going to determine that? And should that be mentioned in the resolution?
I believe it says here that you support the recommendation of the awards committee.
Okay, so that's included.
So that covers it.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you then.
And then the $1,000 has to be filled in the blank, okay?
Okay, perfect. So I'll move by myself, seconded by councillor Stevenson, that council receives report CL 18-10, 2018, Citizen of the Year. And that council supports the recommendations of the special awards committee. And further, that the 2018 Citizen of the Year event shall be a separate event held at a town facility in May or June. And further, that the committee will be the decision-making body for the award within a budget of $1,000 for the event.
Okay. All right, anything further? Council served the resolution? Nothing further, seeing none? All in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Schultz, and your committee for bringing this forward.
I guess I have to do this for another 30 years, is that what you're saying?
Yes, you do, right. All right. Yeah, we're not going to let you go. All right, thank you very much. We're going to move now into public meetings for a committee of adjustment. Councillor Stevenson, would you move us there, please?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Esseltime. The council move into the committee of adjustment to hear applications for minor variance. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, we've heard the resolution, all in favor? Carried. Now we're sitting as committee of adjustment. This is a public meeting held under the Planning Act for the purpose of hearing a minor variance application A 0118. This process allows any person in attendance the opportunity to make a presentation to council. If anyone who appeals this decision has not provided council with oral or written submissions at the public meeting, then the Ontario Municipal Board has the power to dismiss the appeal. If you speak to this application, please state your name and sign your name on the sheet at the podium. And now we'll ask Eric Gilbert, the planner, to proceed with the presentation.
Thank you. This is a minor variance application to reduce the minimum dwelling unit area for nine of the 43 units. So the apartments would be approximately 39.76 square meters or 428 square feet in place of the bylaw requirement of 55 square meters or 592 square feet. The property is part of the Ralph, former Ralph Street Public School redevelopment, which is proposed to convert the school to apartment building. The property is owned entrepreneurial. Council did consider an application last year to rezone the property to permit some dwelling units in the lower floor and to recognize some existing deficiencies. The application is undergoing site plan control, or is going through site plan approval process. And as the floor layouts have been determined, it was noted that some of them are smaller than what the bylaw requires. The building department has noted that there's no concerns from the building code perspective. Even though the units are smaller, they still comply with all the version of the building code. The purpose of this provision is to ensure that apartment units are of a sufficient size and have enough space and amenities for the tenant. In this case, the smaller units will still be, have a lot of amenity area outside as well, it'll provide a different type of unit, a smaller unit that may be more affordable for a different type of tenant in town or tenants that have difficulty obtaining lodgings. No adverse input was received or comments were received. And planning staff are of the opinion that the application is minor, compatible with surrounding development, appropriate, and meets the general intent of the official plan and zoning ballot. And therefore recommend that it be granted approval.
Thank you very much. Any members of council have questions for the planner? Seeing none. I think we'll ask now if there's an opportunity for the public to speak as the applicant or the agent to speak in favor of the application or to ask questions or provide remarks regarding the application. Mr. Curtis? I know who you are, but you better state your name and sign in, please.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council. I'm Shane Curtis. I'm the owner and president of Curtis Wilcox with a business partner, Jason Wilcox. To tie in the last presentation, it's ironic that Matt went before me because we built the, with him, built the Citizen of the Year paving stones in front of the library. And when I became president of the chamber, I was 30 years old. And Matt had been on with the chamber 30 years at that point. So he's quite taken back by that. Remember that, Matt. But so basically what we have, what we have here is, it was mentioned that 428 square feet, that's only one of the units. There is, with the application, if you had a chance to see the layout, it's 474 square feet is actually six or seven of the nine. And what we're after here came to light when my grandmother went into a retirement home. When we really realized that she spent way too long in her own home. And going in a retirement home, there wasn't the opportunity for her to cook her own meals or live more independently than you may in a retirement home. So she stayed in her home where she had to pay somebody to cut the grass, shovel the snow, clean a full-size house. And this product doesn't really exist until summer. So what we're aiming for is a 50-plus in this building. And we're really marketing this to a post-owning a home or an apartment and pre-retirement home. So people will still be able to have 474 square feet. They'll have full kitchens with dishwashers, full bathrooms. We're likely going to do accessible bathrooms in these units as well. But certainly suitable for an elderly couple or an elderly widow. That would be well-suited to this product. I met with the minister, a housing minister mentioned on Monday. And this is really in keeping with their product and what they're going to start pushing as far as the planning goes down to municipalities, about how the building code actually allows 145 square feet, yet in some municipalities, in the case of Tilsimer, it's 592 square feet. And with the province's goal of getting more density and more housing in the same amount of space, then there's certainly, this follows that intent as well. So I'm certainly welcome to take any questions, but that's sort of the background on where we came. It also fits within the structure of this unit, which allows us to keep the hallways the same size. We have to maintain the facade because of the historical factor. But we're basically taking this building and we're infilling. We're not ripping this building apart. We're basically taking classrooms that become units. And this 474 square feet is a common square footage because it is a certain area in the building that's stacked on top of each other. So we're basically, instead of ripping those walls down and changing some structure within the building, we're able to utilize that square footage. And that's how we came up with this.
So you're going three-high?
Yep.
What you're doing?
Yeah, four-high.
Four-high, right.
Yep. Yeah, we're going to utilize the attic.
Got you.
Yep.
Questions, councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you to Shane. Is there a common area at all associated with the building?
Yeah, there is a common area in the new portion, which is the level access to the building and where the accessible units are located. There's an area, there's going to be two sort of areas where there's going to be a seating area with a TV. And then there's going to be like a card table area and a little kitchenette in this area. And then the outdoor amenity areas are going to be quite generous. The former playground on the top level, if you're familiar with the property, that's going to become an outdoor living space. We're going to have four barbecue stations set up there because there's not the ability to do balconies. So there'll be four barbecue stations out there with a couple of covered seating areas, pergolas and such, a water feature like a bubbling rock or something like that. It'll be gated in with a key fob system in wrought iron. And I think it's going to be quite attractive and they're going to like it. And then because there's not, really, other than the front lawn, grass on the property, we're going to treat the lower playground for people's pets almost like a dog park specific to that building. And then put a reading garden down there. So if somebody wants to go down there and read in the shade or in the trees or, you know. And there's also access down into Partizan Park from there. We haven't decided whether we're going to maintain that or not. But certainly, we're going to maintain that as a pet area down there for people that can make it down.
Thank you, sounds good.
Councillor Steve, how are you?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, to Shane. So this will be run as a corporate condominium corporation with a board of directors? Or how will that be?
We plan on maybe having a social committee, but we're planning to retain ownership of all this. This will be a rental unit.
Strictly rental.
Strictly rental, yep.
But you, as the owner, will do all the yard maintenance, I suppose?
Yep, that's right. That'll be included in, we're really leaning towards, it's looking like it's going to be an all-inclusive system because of the efficiencies of cooling it that way in today's society. So it's likely that all utilities, including cable, internet, outside services, propane for the barbecues, everything, it's going to be a one-price system for people.
Part of your rental package.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from Mr. Curtis? Councillor Esseltime?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you to Mr. Curtis. So this is the small end of the apartments that we're talking about today, like the square footage of the smaller. Are there larger ones as well?
Yeah, they go.
Like is there a variety?
Yeah, I would say the average unit is around 900 square feet, with the largest being 1,200. Yep, on the top floor.
These are good questions. A lot of people watching this at home are graduates of Royal Street School. It'd be interesting to see what happens to their.
Yeah, well, likely, we're probably three to four weeks away from having everything finalized from a plan perspective. And that we're in, hopefully, I'm really hoping that we're in the final plan of the site plan control submission. And we're going to be able to have a presentation where the public will be able to come in, see the units. There's going to be opportunities for them to customize them in certain ways. This is your rent. Do you want granite? Do you want this? Do you want this? This is how this product can work for you. We're really looking, although it's a rental, really looking at more, these are long-term units for people that will take a little more like a pride of ownership to them than a typical unit.
Very well. Further questions? Okay, well, and following, thank you. And following on with the process, is there anyone here tonight who's in opposition to the application that would like to speak? And seeing none, any further comments or questions from council members? If not, councillor Stevenson, you have a resolution. Would you read it, please?
I do, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Esseltime that the Tilsimer Committee of Adjustment approves application file A 01-18, submitted by 2117846, Ontario Inc., Curtis Wilcox, for lands described as lot 761 and parts of lots 763 and 764A, Plan 500 in the town of Tilsimer, municipally known as 83 Ralph Street, town of Tilsimer, as it relates to relief from section 12.2B, minimum dwelling unit area to permit nine of the proposed 43 residential apartment units to be a minimum size of 39.76 square meters or 428 square feet in place of the required 55 square meters or 592 square feet. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Council served the resolution one more time. Any more questions? Seeing none, we'll put it to the vote. All in favor? And that motion is carried. Now, there's a little bit more to this. The appeal period. This is a minor variance application number A 0118 has been approved by council. There will now be a 20-day appeal period. And if no appeals are received within that period, the minor variance will be considered final and binding. So that'll take us into the 21st of March, which is the first day of summer. It's good, spring. That'll be, seems like a long way off, doesn't it, after this winter? Okay. Councillor Rosehart, do you have a resolution to move out?
Moved by myself, seconded by council. Here's a council move out of the committee of adjustment and move back into regular council session. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? That's carried. Now, a little bit of a change, but we're not going to let Eric go home. Planning applications. Application for consent for minor variance, B 1773-7 and A 1711-7, 159 Quarterline. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you. This is a severance and minor variance application for a property located at the southwest corner of Quarter Town Line and Durham Drive. The property is immediately adjacent to Westfield Public School. It is a corner lot. And the applicants are proposing to sever a parcel with an area of 846 square meters and retain a parcel with an area of 652 square meters to allow for two single-toothed dwellings to be constructed, one on each lot. The minor variance requested is for the lot frontage. The zoning bylaw requires 19 meters or 62.3 feet. And the applicants propose a lot frontage of 14.86 meters or 48.7 feet. The lot frontage is defined by the zoning bylaw as the frontage that's, in the case of a corner lot, it's where you have the least amount of frontage. So in this case, the legal frontage is actually defined as Quarter Town Line, even though there is actually technically more frontage on Durham Drive. This application is before you pursuant to a policy that the town passed in 2011, which requires any new applications for infill lots to come to town council for a recommendation prior to consideration by Oxford County Land Division Committee. And this application is scheduled to be considered by Land Division Committee on April 5th. The property is zoned R1 and is designated for low-density or central development. The provincial policy statement permits infill housing as appropriate. And the official plan permits infill lots into existing residential areas where the proposal is deemed to be consistent with the characteristics of existing development on both sides of the street in roughly a two-block area. In this case, the area is a transitional area. Lands to the north are older lots created in 1957 by the former township of Durham. These lots have a relatively large size because they were not serviced. Whereas lots to the south, as part of Baldwin Place, Victoria Wood subdivision, and lots to the east, as part of the Andrews Crossing subdivision, as you expect, are quite a bit smaller. They have reduced frontages in areas similar to what this application proposes. So as this planning staff has looked at both areas and have determined that overall it is consistent with what is planned, east and west, the lands that the school board owns as part of Westfield Public School, those are also designated for future development. So it's likely that new development in that area would be more consistent with this proposal than it would be with the lands to the north, which are older historical development. In terms of comments, we didn't receive any comments. and have determined that overall it is consistent with what, what is planned, uh, east and west. Uh, the lands that the school board owns, uh, as part of Westfield Public School, those are also designated for future development. So it's likely that, um, new development in that area would be more consistent with, uh, this proposal than it would be with the, uh, lands to the north, which are older historical development. Uh, in terms of, uh, comments, we didn't receive any comments, uh, from the public on this application. There were a couple of comments about servicing, uh, so the applicants are aware of the, uh, cost of the servicing will be actual cost. And they can either pay that at time of a building permit, or they can pay it upfront. The, uh, those are, as well as the, uh, comments from the building department, uh, those are included as conditions of approval that ought to be, uh, completed to the satisfaction of the town before the consent is finalized. The plan for the house does have the exterior side yard for the lot to be severed is less than what's required by the bylaw. Uh, but that will require relief from the Committee of Adjustment. So once the dwelling is proposed or the design is finalized, uh, that will require a future variance, uh, for the exterior side yard. But it does comply with, uh, the other setbacks. Uh, the proposal is consistent with the official plan policy for infill development. Uh, we have gone through the criteria and have, uh, are of the opinion that it is consistent with those criteria or can be addressed through the conditions of approval. So as such, staff recommend that council advise Land Division Committee that sta- that council supports, uh, these applications.
Okay. So just to be clear, and I maybe got a little ahead of myself here. This is a decision to be made by Oxford County. They're simply looking for, uh, our council to recommend it. Um, that's part of the process. It requires a direction and support from town council for them to, uh, to, uh, follow the application for consent for the minor variance, so. So do we have any questions from Mr. Gilbert, uh, Councilor Stevenson?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, through you to Gilbert. Um, if they weren't severing this, would have it come to us?
No, actually the applicants did submit a building permit for one house on the property. And then they determined that, uh, it could be possible to sever it into two lots.
Okay, so if, if they'd left, left it alone as one, we wouldn't have heard about this at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Council Essletine?
Just a quick question then, so, um, will they both have Quarterline Road addresses? Like will they both front onto Quarterline Road? So the retained one will be one fifty-nine and the other one will be another number on Quarterline?
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor, likely yes, although the, at time of the site plan for the new, new house, depending on, as long as the driveway setback, a certain, uh, distance from the intersection, they, they could have a driveway for the severed lot off Quarter Town Line.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Very well. Further questions? Seeing none, we have a resolution, Councilor Rosehart? Number eight?
Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Council Hayes. The council advi- advises Oxford County Land Division Committee that the town supports operation B seventeen dash seventy-three dash seven and A seventeen dash eleven dash seven, subject to the conditions contained in report CP twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councils heard the resolution. And we'll call the question, all in favor? I'm sorry, questions?
Sorry David.
I'm sorry? Nothing good?
Something that he just said, uh, so they could actually have the driveway come off Durham Drive as well? If they wish?
Yeah, they, they could, yeah, depending on where the, if it has an attached garage and where that is and the driveway location. As long as the driveway isn't too close to the intersection, uh, they could likely have it on Quarter Town Line.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Essletine?
And so if they had the driveway and the garage going to Durham Drive, the address would be a Durham Drive a- address, is that how that works?
Uh, likely yes.
Okay, okay, thanks.
We have areas in town that's not that way. Uh, the lot is already pre-designed, but I think that would have to be a decision made at the time.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we've had a resolution, any further questions? All in favor? Let's carry.
Okay, information items, number eleven?
To number eleven on the agenda? Information items, the mayor's report, he's not here tonight. Quarterly reports, seeing none. Um, reports from departments. We have, uh, the Smart City City Challenge Appointment. Councilor Hayes, do you have a resolution?
Yes, I do. Moved by Hayes, seconded by Council Rosehart. That council receives report CL eighteen dash oh eight, Smart Cities Challenge Committee Appointment, and that Scott Northcott be appointed as the Tilsonburg representative on the Oxford Municipal Partners Smart Cities Challenge Committee.
We thank you for that. And just a little bit of a description as to, uh, uh, what happened here. We were presented, this council was presented, uh, at the last meeting, um, with Oxford County that, uh, application will be made for, uh, Smart Cities Grant. And that, uh, Oxford County will be looking for, uh, partners and an ad hoc committee. That's where this appointment is being made. This, uh, appointee, along with our mayor and our C A O, will be going with other area municipalities within Oxford and, uh, make an application for this. A lot of this is technically driven for the long term. And, uh, as discussed, some of these, um, projects that may be done haven't even been invented yet because this is sort of a, a long term that the federal people are, are looking at and, uh, and hopefully Oxford County is, uh, chosen as a recipient of, of this, uh, this application for funding. So, we've heard the resolution, it's moved and it's passed. I think that's it? We voted? We didn't vote on that? Uh, all in favor? Thank you, let's carry. Um, procedural bylaw, and I think what we'll do is we'll ask our clerk if she'd like to discuss this. Procedural bylaw was written quite some time ago and it, it's subject to amendments. It's been circulated to members of council. It's probably very sleepy for those sitting in the gallery. But this is what we do to make, make sure that we're following the, the legislation properly and that we have the respect for each other and we have a, a positive commitment to what goes on at council meetings. So, maybe we'll ask the clerk if she would make some comments.
Um, simply that, uh, this bylaw was before council originally on September twelfth, twenty sixteen. Uh, council was asked to provide comments at that time. There were none provided. However, Bill sixty-eight came into play, modernizing Ontario's municipal legislation act, uh, which allowed for a number of additional changes that would be required. So, uh, those are updating the definition of a meeting, criteria for closed session, electronic participation in a meeting, to allow for an alternate member of an upper tier council. Uh, set out the process to fill a vacant seat on council and appoint a deputy mayor, the requirement for a written disclosure form and additional delegation requirements we've also added to this, uh, bylaw before you tonight.
Some councils have the opportunity to read this over the weekend. That's circulating, are there, uh, any comments or questions? Do you want to read this? Uh, Council Stevenson?
Yeah, the only, uh, when I looked it over, the only thing that struck me was this written disclosure item. How far in advance do you have to submit the written disclosure?
Through you Deputy Mayor. Um, that is a requirement that actually is coming into force on January first of twenty nineteen. Um, we've included it in this bylaw for simplicity so that we don't have to come back. The written disclosure would be done at the time of disclosing. And, uh, then the requirement is for the clerk to keep a log of those.
Any other questions on this, or anyone wish to bring something up before we give a first and second reading? We're not gonna give a third reading tonight, are we? Just first and second. And that leaves for an opportunity in case there's something else needs to be written into it, so. If everyone's comfortable with it, I'm, I'm going to bring something up. I, I spent a half an hour or so with the clerk this afternoon. I did have something that I'd like to have built into it. And, um, she has, uh, made some draft notes here. And, um, it, why don't you read what's there and then maybe I'll, I'll explain my logic as to what, uh, what I'd like to have done, or why I'd like to do it.
You want me to read the additions?
I can do that if you would. And then I will, uh, explain how I feel and see if I get the support of the members here.
Okay, um, in part eight, rules of procedure for council meetings. Uh, part eight point one is duties of the presiding officer. I've added, uh, a section between B and C which reads, allow debate on all matters prior to motions being placed on the floor.
All right, good. It's not printed in there, it's just what she read. You, you won't read that because I just brought it forward this afternoon and I'd like to add it in. Uh, what she just said, did you hear?
Just a second, I'll continue.
Do you like her to re- to repeat that? It's not in print, would-
I don't have it on the agenda.
It's not in here?
No, it's not there.
No. This is an additional line that's under part eight of the proposed bylaw.
Part eight is in there.
What page is it on?
J D five of the Agenda Act, page twenty-four of the proposed law.
J D five? Just get caught up here. Absolutely. Right?
Yep.
So just wait till we find it. This is a little box at the top says eighty-five out of three sixty-seven? Okay.
Okay.
Right. That's eight point one, yes?
Or eight?
Eight point one.
Okay, eight point one is duties of the presiding officer, so duties of the chair. So, between section one B and one C, the proposed amendment is to allow debate on all matters prior to motions being placed on the floor.
And with that, I'll explain the logic of why I wanted that planted. Because there are times that, uh, the mayor, the mayor, the chair, and I'm, I'm, it could be anyone who's assuming this position, that's why it's written in the bylaw, will ask for a resolution to be moved and seconded, brought forward and then debated. And quite often, that particular issue is not accepted because one or more members of council don't like it the way it is and they want it changed. And then what we have to do is either have the mover and second or rescind it, or we have to amend it. This way, we can see what the proposed resolution is. And if it's not moved and seconded, we can discuss it. Then when we're comfortable with it, then we'll ask it to be moved and seconded. If you note, we just did that with our Committee of Adjustment. Uh, we didn't read the resolution until all the questions were asked and answered. So that leaves the opportunity for the clerk and our staff to come out and make these little tweaks and changes. And then when everyone's comfortable with it, we'll bring it forward and ask that the resolution be received and passed after we've dealt with it. And all that's doing is saving a considerable amount of time where we may have to say, eh, we didn't like the original move by council so-and-so and seconded by council so-and-so. So would you mind pulling that back and then we'll bring it again? And it just cleans up the procedure, is what it does. So it's not taking away anything, it's just the matter in which things are done. And it's a time saver at the end of the night and a lot less confusing to members of council and to staff and to those who may present something from the gallery or by mail or whatever that may change the, the, because when you see it in the minutes, it's not necessarily gospel. It's what maybe staff is recommending and usually we go with it. But, uh, there may be reasons that, that change our mind and then we do it at the end. So, that's all I'm asking in this, when we do this procedural bylaw, is that we make, um, put the mover and the seconder at the end after the, after we've discussed it, rather than to open it up for discussion after the mover and the seconder put them on. Seen it done both ways and this is a lot tidier. So, I know Oxford County does it that way and it saves a great deal of time. And it's a lot more transparent, easier to follow for everyone. Okay? So with that said, any questions of me or the clerk on this particular one? Uh, Council Hayes?
Well, thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Actually, I have the resolution to support the report. And listening to the further discussion about making some changes, I don't know, do you wanna change this resolution or how do you wanna add that material to it?
As amended? As amended to include whatever number it would be? How would you suggest we do it, uh, clerk?
I suggest that the motion, the proposed motion is fine to go. The proposed motion is stating that the bylaw will come back for first and second reading tonight. Um, this is a minor amendment that can be made prior to third reading of the bylaw.
So-
It'll be looked after in the third reading?
Be looked after in the third reading, okay?
Great, thank you.
It is very minor, but, uh, okay, so that's the process.
You want me to read the res-
Read the resolution as, as printed?
Moved by Hayes, seconded by Council Rosehart. The council receives report CL eighteen dash eleven procedural bylaw and that bylaw forty-one seventy-three Tilsonburg procedural bylaw be brought forward for council consideration for first and second reading.
I believe that's clear enough, all right? Um, any other comments on the overall package? Seeing none, all in favor? Let's carry. Thank you and thank you for, uh, I hope I made it clear what my intent was on that. It's, uh, just to try and make sure that the process is beat up and transparent, sure.
Yeah, I don't think it was in the, in the proposal, but in the past, we've had situations where some of us had to declare a pecuniary interest and it really wasn't financial. Is that re- understood now that it doesn't have to be financial? Like, the, the, the member isn't gaining anything. But there's a conflict of interest in voting on it.
Would you like to comment, or should I? I gotta take a shot at this one. Um, we have had legal counsel talk to us many times about, uh, pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest. And I, I think the bottom line is if in doubt at all that it could hurt yourself or hurt the municipality, you should declare. If there's any doubt in your mind.
Okay, are there both, are both words in the bylaw? Pecuniary and conflict of interest?
I don't think it's in the bylaw, is it, uh, Donna? Because that's up to the member to declare the pecuniary interest.
But it should be in there if, if it's a possibility.
Go ahead, do you, uh, do you recall it? It's, it's a thick document, I, I have memorized it.
You can check by third reading, it's, it's no big deal. If you could, if it isn't in, maybe just put it in. I, I just think back to several situations where no one was gaining anything financially, but it was a conflict and the, the person, the, the member wanted to, council member wanted not to vote on it and, and rightly so. But it wasn't pecuniary.
Declaring a conflict of interest is, um, set out in the legislation. And what you, what a counselor is required to declare is a pecuniary interest of some sort, whether it's at arm's length, whether it's direct. You are required to declare that. That's the conflict. Now-
Well, there are c- conflicts that are not pecuniary. No one's gonna gain any money by it, but the person should not be voting in a certain situation because they've already made their mind up before a debate begins. And I can think of several in the past where that's happened. Anyways, we'll, we'll, I'll talk to you about it later, I just wanted to bring it up now, that's all.
This isn't new.
Yeah.
If by any means. Council Essletine?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just because we are addressing a few things here, there was, there was one section and it's on page seventy-nine, I think, section six point six deputations and delegations. And it, it reads, um, "Council shall not debate requests from delegations until staff information has been provided at a subsequent meeting." Now, I know there have been instances when we've debated things that delegations have come to talk about at the same meeting, but we're not supposed to, is that correct? According to this document.
Go ahead.
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor. Um, that is one of the, the areas within this bylaw that we've defined. Um, that was not in, included in our previous bylaw. And the practice of deputations is for individuals to come and speak to council about a various matter. Um, in doing it this way, it allows staff the opportunity to review matters and bring back information and recommendations to council at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, so this is, this is a new part of the, okay, I, I missed that part, that it was new because I thought we haven't been doing it that way, but it is new. So that's the way we will be doing it once this receives third reading, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
Although we've proved this through resolution, is there anything else that's really new in this that you'd like to bring to council's attention?
Deputy Mayor selection.
Right, the deputy mayor's selection in the next term? Because the deputy mayor position as we have it now is not necessarily at ballot time and it's not for the four-year term. In other words, in absence of the mayor who runs the meeting. And what have you got in there for that?
Well, the list that I provided in the report on page fifty-nine of your package are all the additional things that were added to this bylaw uh, prior to seeing it in the end of twenty sixteen. Do you want me to read that?
Sure.
So it, the definition of a meeting, um, which was changed in the legislation, it was done to clarify what a meeting is and it allows for council to meet in social settings where they're not advancing the business of council. So prior to this, it was always considered if council as a whole met or the majority of council met, it constituted a meeting. This clarifies this and allows council to actually attend social events together without it constituting a meeting as long as the business of council is not advanced. Um, there were about four additional closed session requirements that we've added. The electronic participation in a meeting which council addressed a meeting ago, so it won't be allowed here. The alternate member of the upper tier council, which council has dealt with, to fill the vacant seat of council and appoint deputy mayor, that was added to this. The written disclosure form we've talked about and the additional delegation requirements we've talked about.
Clear? Good. All right, well, as I said, we've, uh, we voted on the resolution and maybe that should have came up prior to the vote, but uh, it's just information items that she's earmarked or at least highlighted for councils. Information. Okay, where are we? Page six, seven? Page seven, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to talk about development and communication services. Uh, animal control bylaw with muzzles. Muzzle order bylaw. And we haven't adopted the new one, so I'll ask councillor Esseltine? Or councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I believe I have this one on, uh, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Esseltine. The council received report DCS eighteen dash zero-six, animal control bylaw amendment muzzle orders as information. And that bylaw forty-one sixty-nine to amend bylaw thirty-five oh seven, animal care and control to include a provision for muzzle order hearings and appeals be brought forward for council consideration and have staff advertise for a community member for the muzzle order appeal committee for council appointment. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay. We've heard that, is there, uh, I, I guess the question is, is who's here for resource? Is there are questions on this? Okay. Do we have any questions? Councillor Rosehart?
Uh, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I guess there's no one here to talk to about this, I'm assuming.
Clerk said she'll take a shot at it.
Oh, okay. Do you have a dog? Okay, won't ask any questions then. Uh, I, I guess I, I just have one thing that they want to put a committee together. And I was wondering if, uh, does council do that? Because if we're going to do a committee, then maybe they should be looking at, uh, the committee that has a dog park. They're already aware of dogs and they're all have dogs that sit on that, so they would be more aware of what's happening, whether a dog should be muzzled or not, or they're looking to put a committee together. So would we not use a committee that's already in place that would understand?
Sure. Answer?
Yep, through you, Deputy Mayor. This process is to deal with issues after a muzzle order has been issued by bylaw enforcement within the town of Tilsenberg. So currently, within the bylaw, there is no avenue for an individual to appeal that order. That order is for the life of the dog. This will allow um, an individual to appeal that and possibly um, request for a shorter period of time.
Can I just follow up on that, Deputy Mayor?
Sure.
Within, within this, it reads that council is the authority person if anybody appeals it? And they said they've had one issue, but I don't recall anything ever coming to council.
Council is always the authority on all bylaws, so any individual that has an issue with the bylaw can bring it to council's attention. Um, you're absolutely right, no one has brought an issue from the public to council on this uh, particular problem or particular issue if, if they wish to appeal. So this is proactively allowing for a process to be put in place in case this happens.
I'll follow up, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Sure.
And, and I would still, I would go back to the fact that I think the people who sit on the dog park committee would have more interest in this kind of a thing because they're dealing with dogs every day and the dog might even come into their dog park at one time. So they would be aware of the dogs and what's going on.
And through you, Deputy Mayor, um, the process would be to advertise this uh, committee in the public, so any of those members would be able to apply.
In other words, maybe they don't want to serve on the committee, so, but we could certainly invite them to apply, to apply for it.
Thank you.
Councillor Hayes?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, I'll just throw another point out there. I, I struggle with the fact if we have a dog that's that vicious, that's got to have a muzzle on it, why do we have to have that type of bylaw?
You make a good point. Councillor Stevenson?
I, I did, I think that's the problem. Some people think that the dog barks, he's vicious. You know, I, I don't know how you, when a muzzle order comes, I think somebody has to be bit before a muzzle order comes, but I don't know, councillor Hayes, but I agree with you, why, if it has bitten somebody, put a muzzle on him, yeah.
All good points. Okay, so the motion reads, I'm sorry, councillor Esseltine?
Sorry, uh, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, then. I see that the other members of the appeal committee would be the chief building official or designate, the clerk or designate, plus two members of council and then the one member of the public that we're advertising for here. Would this just be like, uh, to serve on that committee per occurrence? Like you wouldn't be assigned to that committee for a four-year term or anything like that as a councillor? It would be when an occurrence happens, we would look for two councillors to be available to serve on that committee.
I would guess there would not be monthly meetings, no. Let's hope there would be no meetings.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay, yeah, just as needed. Okay. Any other questions before we call the question? Okay, all in favor? Let's carry. Thank you. Where are we now? Animal control surplus land um, declaration? Councillor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Esseltine. The council receives report DCS eighteen dash zero-two surplus land declaration for fifty-eight Brock Street East. And that the property described as part of a lot eleven eighty-seven and eleven eighty-eight, plan five hundred designated as part three on reference plan forty-one R five three eight nine be declared surplus to the needs of the town of Tilsenberg in accordance with bylaw thirty-five forty-nine sale of real property policy. Subject to rezoning of the property by the town from open space one to zoning suitable for development. Two, preparation and approval of a record of site condition by the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change. Three, advertising in accordance with town policy. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
You've heard the, uh, resolution? Are there any questions? For the report, councillor Esseltine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you to, um, maybe the writer of the report, Mr. Pancho, would that be possible?
Cephus?
So, Mr. Pancho, I'm wondering, would this lot be suitable for other than residential development? Or are we looking at strictly zoning it for residential development?
Uh, through Deputy Mayor Behrs to councillor Esseltine. So certainly the, um, the property itself, if I recall correctly, is about ten thousand square feet. So a normal residential lot or standard residential lot would be about five thousand square feet. So if you're just looking at the math, you could say, well, it's twice a normal residential lot. The challenge, of course, is the unusual configuration of the site. It's not really well conducive for, I would suggest for many commercial uses. Uh, because it'd be tough to fill, fit in a building, if you will, on that property, plus the parking requirements for, uh, an office building, let's, let's say for example. So I think it might be possible, but be, it would be quite a small um, building, I'm not sure it'd be viable. So certainly our intent right now is to look at it as a residential opportunity.
Okay, did you, um, and how would we determine the price of that property?
Yeah, certainly, uh, through the Deputy Mayor again. Certainly, we could get a lot of opinion, it was just typically what we do through a real estate agent.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Councillor Stevenson?
Maybe missed, through you to Mr. Pancho. The second clause here, the, throws me off. Preparation approval of a record of site condition by the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change. Why would they care about this lot?
Process, I'm sorry.
Through the Deputy Mayor, uh, to councillor Stevenson. Certainly, the, uh, when a site, my understanding is, and this is more of a billing department issue or I guess site plan issue, but when a site is changed from one zoning to another, what there has to be is there has to be a record that it is suitable for residential development and that's a requirement by the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change. In this particular, particular case, uh, our records suggest that it probably was part of a rail corridor, which lends impetus to the, to the need for having that record of site condition. So, um, that's what we would be doing as part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any further questions? Councillor Hayes?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, to Cephus. Has there been any inquiries about this particular piece of property or?
Through the Deputy Mayor to councillor Hayes, yes, there have been at least a number of inquiries on this property, uh, which is kind of why it's come up and why we've looked at it more seriously.
Okay, and I guess as you say, the shape of it though is going to kind of eliminate some projects on there too, that's the long, narrow part of it, right?
Yeah. That's correct.
Thank you.
Councillor Rosehart?
Yeah, through Deputy Mayor and Mr. Pancho. Uh, that property is a low, low, low lying area there. All right, the water runs down from the other houses down there.
That's correct, yes.
Right? So would we have not maybe looked at the other people, offering them to see if they would want to purchase that and subdivide it that? Where are we just looking at, uh?
Through the Deputy Mayor Behrs to councillor, uh, Rosehart. Certainly, uh, I guess, hadn't really thought of that, but that's certainly, I guess what you're saying is those lots could be extended, some of those lots that it backs onto are shallow. That is a possibility that we've not contemplated, or that I've not contemplated in any way. I think that what we would do is if we, um, for example, we're going to obviously advertise this, uh, so we, if we had interest come forward as part of that process, then certainly that could be something that council considers at that time.
Josh, through you Deputy Mayor, if you, if I may.
Please do.
But in the meantime, we're going to take this as one, one section of land. Right?
Yes.
And then we'd have to take it again and divide it up again, right? So we'd be doing double the work if we offered it to the people now, rather than take it. I, I'm just trying to save us some time and money.
Yeah.
Whereas we're going to take it and subdivide it, make a lot out of it. There, there's a lot of water there.
Yeah. Through the Deputy Mayor, there is, there's a catch basin on site to the property to deal with that water, but certainly it, the water would flow down there.
There's a lot of water.
I agree. And I think that to, typically when you do see property added to the back of residential lots, that's not the way to maximize value because most of those people aren't going to be willing to pay a large amount of money to get extra land onto their property. Whereas if we sell it as a block, you're going to maximize your value on that in terms of dollars, so.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I, I'm quite aware, but I do realize there's a lot of water there. And I know that we have made some properties with a lot of water on. And it's hard for them to deal with the water because you need sub pumps all the time, right? So, and that could create a problem? Or would that be up to the town to make sure that the water flow? With that drain catch basin there, is that up to us to move?
Through Deputy, I think that, um, if we were to sell a property, it's incumbent upon the developer to demonstrate to the town through the billing permit process and perhaps even the site plan process that, that the drainage is going to be taken care of and that the property will be, you know, suitably drained without encumbering or endangering the basement. So I don't know if Mr., the director of operations could lend any weight to that, but that's certainly my understanding.
So my question was, would that be up to the town? To remove that drain?
No.
Up to the builder?
That's correct.
And he will be made aware of that?
Yes.
And a few other things?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
For the disclosure.
Deputy Mayor, sorry.
Sure, councillor Hayes?
Well, thanks Deputy Mayor. I guess just my comment was, once we pass this tonight, it is surplus land, so it could be divided up if, if the neighbors were interested. We have to declare it surplus to start with.
Councillor Rosehart, yes. Absolutely, good. Okay, we've heard the resolution, any further comments? Seeing none, we'll put it to the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. On with the next item? The planning application for two fifty-three Broadway? Councillor Esseltine? Well, the procedural bylaws not into place yet, so. I guess we could do it either way, couldn't we? Then, uh, with that said, we'll wait. Cephus, would you do the presentation then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Behrs. Um, so in front of you, uh, in report DCS eighteen oh eight, which is a community improvement plan application for the two fifty-three Broadway property. Certainly, council will be familiar with this property. It is a project that has been worked on for a number of years, of course. Uh, most recently was in front of council, I believe, in the fall with respect to a site plan, uh, a change of the site plan for this property. So this property, uh, has a, of course, is, was a town-owned property that we went through a very public process. Uh, we have secured a developer, uh, through that process to build a three-story building on that with the ground floor commercial, uh, underbuilding parking on the main floor as well, and then twenty-eight residential units on the second and the third floor. So, um, this developer is keen to move forward with this project. Uh, as part of it, they have submitted this application under our recently updated, and I think it was last spring that we got it approved with respect to this new community improvement plan. And so they have applied to, uh, to have some rebates under this program. The two that we're recommending, there's two, there's a number of aspects to this program, but the two, uh, main ones I would suggest are the billing permit fee rebate once the project is complete. And then secondly, it's a phase in of the property taxes, um, over time. So again, that phase in isn't a direct cost to the municipality, it's a, it's an opportunity cost in the sense that uh, we would collect the revenue from that new tax revenue and we would rebate, um, portion of that back to the developer. So, um, again, uh, this project, uh, I guess in terms of, um, um, the town of Tilsenberg, I would suggest to council, I think they've seen that, that it is quite a substantial one for the town. Uh, frankly, I think it's a huge win for our community to have this project. Um, when you look at the community strategic plan and some of the comments we have there, uh, some of the talk is about new housing in the downtown, even going back to our two thousand and four municipal strategy, which is quite dated, uh, as well. But we've talked about having residential, new residential in our downtown for a very long time. And this brings twenty-eight units. Um, certainly in terms of the middle third of people that we target in our branding strategy, we talk about the fact that it's important to have housing in, in downtown cores where uh, the new generation, if you will, the millennials and older, tend to want to live in the hub and the, in an area that's dynamic and thriving. Uh, so we believe that this supports this as well. Um, so, um, there's a number of things as well. I know that their council has been patient, uh, in terms of waiting for this development to come, uh, forward. Uh, but I suggest that the developer is willing to proceed. They've invested, uh, easily over two hundred thousand dollars in just approvals, plus the acquisition of land, so nearly six hundred thousand dollars already. Um, and, uh, the project cost itself has gone up too, as you know, construction costs have gone up quite significantly. And to give you a sense, uh, we're talking to the project is probably around five million now. It was three million when it was first proposed to council. So, uh, some of that's building costs, some of that's because they've actually increased the size of the, the number of units there as well, so certainly there's a mixture of that. But again, uh, this is a costly project, um, and it's a big project for the downtown that's going to, in my opinion, significantly improve and enhance our community as well. So certainly my recommendation, um, is that, uh, is that this be supported at the strategic level, which is the highest level underneath the community improvement plan that council has approved. And with that, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I will stop. I will note as well that I do have a representative from, uh, the buyer of that property, the developer, Maria Cup, I'm sorry, Capatorito. And certainly if there's any questions that I can't handle, I can, uh, she could speak to that as well in, in support of the application, so.
Okay, thank you and thank you for being here. As the way- Is the weather getting bad yet? Are the roads still okay? They're starting?
Not bad yet.
Not bad yet, okay. Well, we'll have you out of here by 1 o'clock in the morning, so you won't have to worry about it, okay? Members of council, questions? Counselor Stevenson?
Just through you to Stevenson. I'm all for this proposal, but I just wanted to just get rid of a rumor. I heard a rumor back that this is flipped, that the original owner that came to us is now sold, and it's a new owner, basically, that's coming forward. Is there any validity to that?
Something you'd like to answer?
Yes, I can, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Certainly, I think that probably what people may not understand is that the company that's on the name, if you will, is slightly different. So, we were, the company, the name on the agreement was, I'm trying to think here, was a company in trust and a name in trust. The, what we watch with our offers, we're very, very clear on this, because we do not want to support flipping of property. So what we watch is actually the ownership of the corporations that take ownership of that property, which is verified prior to closing. So the point is, is that the name is JMR Properties Inc. now, which is the name on the application, but the people involved with the project are the same, and that's verified again, was verified prior to closing, and something that we as staff are comfortable that this property has not been flipped, so.
I just wanted that clarified.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Further questions, Counselor Assotain?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you to Cephus. So, Cephus, you mentioned that the strategic level is what this particular project that the grant back is based on. What are the other levels of the community improvement program?
Through the Deputy Mayor again. So, we have the general level, which I guess you would describe as the base level. And the biggest difference you'll note here, in years one to six, we have in our recommendation 100% rebate of the incremental tax increase, so again, only the increase. In the base level program, we actually phased the tax increase in over just five years.
Okay.
So it would go 80, 60, 50, sorry, 80, 60, 40, 20, 0.
Okay.
And then you'd be at full assessed value. In the high level, level of the program, you would actually get, that 100% rebate would be 50%. So again, and then it would be phased in up to 10 years. In this program, we're seeing now that years one to six is 100% rebate of the increase in the taxes. So again, that is essentially all of the increase in the taxes are rebated for the first six years, which is substantial, but again, which I would suggest it's warranted in this case, so.
Okay, I guess my concern with this particular project and the strategic level, then, is that the base cost of the property, like in many instances, the improvement to the property would be half, and the base cost would be half. But in this particular instance, I think you've told me that the base cost, or the ba, okay, let me get this straight, because this is all, is a lot less, because it's a vacant piece of property. So, the taxes paid on the property currently are a whole lot less than what they will be with the new project. So what we're rebating is a whole lot.
I can address that, and certainly, what we do in terms of the base assessment, which is, I think you're referring to, the base taxable assessment. Right now, I know that this property is assessed very low, because the town has owned it, so it's assessed at $70,000, which is a crazy value. It's very low. What we do with the base assessment, and this is getting a little bit into tax theory, so I'll look to my, the Director of Finance to correct me if I overset my bounds here, but what we do, we actually convert that to the actual value. So the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation will convert that to the actual value, and then we will, which is based on the sale price of the property.
Right.
And then they will actually, that will serve as the base assessment. So they won't benefit from the fact that the town owned it, and it was under assessed in the past, is what I should say.
Okay, but so the base value, then, is the sale price about, which was 350,000?
Correct.
Is that correct? So we're working with a base value of 350,000 and an improved value of 5 million. So, the difference there is huge.
Yep.
So, we're rebating taxes and in just, and you gave me that the one-year tax might be 60,000 was sort of the information you gave to me. So if we go according to this scale, then, and using 60,000 as the annual taxes, we're rebating about a half a million dollars in taxes over those 10 years.
Through the Deputy Mayor.
Which is way over the value, which is more than the value of the property. And I know that's probably not the way you look at it, but I just think we're rebating a whole lot in taxes, and we're not, the town is not making anything in taxes for the first 10 years of that property.
A couple of clarifications, if I may.
Okay, okay.
So it's first six years of the property.
Okay, sorry, sorry, first six years, yes.
And then also, we will get the base assessment taxes. So we will see some number, let's call it $5,000 to $10,000, that we will get from that property, just based on the base assessment.
Base assessment, yeah.
Okay, and that'll be the difference. Our modeling, and again, it's really loose, as I mentioned perhaps in our correspondence earlier, is that it could be in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $350,000 of rebate over the 10 years, which is a significant number. It's comparable to the price, but you will note, of course, that the investment is $500,000. Sorry, $5 million, $5 million. So, again, it's relative to the size of the investment. We don't see $5 million investments in our downtown very often. So again, it is a little bit different, I'd suggest, though.
Have we got any sort of precedent for this? Like, have we done this before?
Yeah, sorry?
With a particular project?
Yeah.
Well, it's your turn to help.
Yeah, thank you. Through the Deputy Mayor, what we do have in our CIP program is that the rebate cannot be more than the project cost, not the land cost, but the actual total project cost, which is 5 million. When you look at what this is going to rebate in terms of the investment, it's about 7% if I remember the number correctly. So it is a smaller number, even though it is significant. So, hopefully that helps, and...
Okay.
Was there something you wanted to say?
I was just going to say, the reason that this kind of program in incremental taxes was brought in is that if you look at how much we've received in revenue on that property for the last 10 years.
Nothing, yeah, yeah.
And going forward, for the next 10 years, we will not only be receiving some of the monies, yes, not all, that is possible, but we certainly, in the 10 years after that, that 60,000 a year, if that's what the number comes in, would be 600,000. So we will be getting the monies. There is a delay of getting it, but the fact is, we have a project that's put in place. We have the opportunity to have the employment created to build that building. We give 28 more people a place to live, and, you know, we drive more activity from all of that. So the benefits to us aren't directly in taxes until year seven and obviously beyond, but we certainly, there are some other benefits for the municipality, and, you know, as I indicated early, we're getting nothing now. So this is a whole lot better than what we were getting before. And that's why you put in these incentives, to get somebody to make a $5 million investment in our downtown, so.
Okay, I can appreciate what you're saying, certainly. I have another question here, and I'll have to, I'll pass. If I come back, if I think of it again, I'll ask if I can.
Well, this, and I'm just going to interject here to Cephus. This has been done in the past with industry, hasn't it, to help encourage industry to come here? We're not giving them anything. We're just helping them to spread things out a little bit, to get on their feet.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, with respect to industry, that's actually a new aspect of the program that we have, so we don't have a lot of experience in that regard. I would suggest, though, that there's a number of multi-residential projects in the downtown that have been built over the last 10 years that have actually received this in the past. So, Tilson Landing, a number of other larger apartment dwellings, too. So, the other thing I will add as well, one thing the developer found out and the buyer found out is that, that there's actually, we didn't know this, so it wasn't, I guess they bought the property as is, but there's actually a need to remove a lot of the topsoil that's on site. So there's actually extra engineering cost and trucking cost to get that off. So that's got to be factored in as well into the project. So, it was a surprise for them, a surprise for us, but there are a lot of costs with this project, there's no doubt.
Okay, good. Further questions? Counselor Stevenson?
Just an education question. Does anyone know what was there originally on that site? It wasn't always vacant, it was since I came to town, but...
Yeah.
In the early '40s?
Houses, actually, some of, I think one of our staff members had a family house that was on the site there.
Okay, thank you. It was housed.
Yep.
Sure.
Further questions? Counselor Rosehart?
Through you Deputy Mayor to Cephus. I realize these are businesses, and they come to our community, and they buy the property. And I only get one option here. You didn't give me more than one option on incentives, which I struggle with all the time, that you guys always just give us one option. I'm like Counselor Assotain, I think this is huge, huge. And as far as the property goes, people buy the property. That's not our problem. They buy, it's up to them to make sure that they know what they're buying. Is that not right? Or do we have to, if we don't know, do they not have to make sure they know what they're buying? Just a question to you.
I think, Mr., through the Deputy Mayor to Counselor Rosehart, that's a great question. Certainly, that is, it's buyer beware, that's what we sell our property as, but at the same time, we also, when we're talking to developers, especially in the downtown where development is a challenge, because it's higher cost, et cetera, we do also market our programs and say, you know what? Yes, it's higher cost, but you're going to benefit from no development charge, you're going to benefit from potentially the community improvement plan. And so they factor that in to their development. And this development here is a development that would be, I think, any community in South Western Ontario would be envious of, in terms of having it in their downtown core. And you know what? Programs like this are needed, I strongly believe, to make projects like this work. If this program wasn't here, I don't think we'd be talking about this opportunity. I truly do, so.
You still, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Sure.
You still only give me one choice in front of me. And I struggle with that. They've been in front of us before and have taken away the balconies, the patio doors, it was a beautiful building. But now that's all gone, too. And when you look at the picture, now it's a square building.
Well, Counselor Rosehart, are you talking about the site plan, or are you talking about the finances?
I'm talking about the site. I'm looking at the picture of the building, because it's been come, it's already been downgraded, the building.
And I get that, and I think, you know, in fairness, we should save that for another day. That's not what this is about, this program's about.
Then I'm not going to support this, because I'm only getting one option here, and I think we should have more options than one, to look at this. And it's a piece of property that's well in use in the town and needs to look nice when they come in and build it. So, I struggle with the fact that we get one option. Thank you.
And I see your point, but as I said, we should stick to the agenda on this.
Yep, no problem at all.
Deal with this one, and there'll be a time and a place for your comments, okay? Thank you. Anything else for Cephus in regards to the agenda? And seeing none, we have a resolution, and I believe Counselor Assotain has that resolution.
Okay, and just before I read the resolution, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I can just ask, so I think in your report, Mr. Pencho, you say that we're looking at building this, starting in the spring this year, is that correct? Is that a guaranteed, yes, this is happening? Can we make this conditional on this happening?
Well, it is conditional. It has to be built in order for this program to apply.
Okay.
I think that that's quite, that's how the program works. It's a rebate program, so you have to pay all your costs first, and you get the rebate.
And you get the rebate, okay.
That's probably a question that's more fair for perhaps me to not answer, but my understanding is that we have a right to purchase these lands back, so if they don't meet certain obligations, then that's where we will go. We hope not to go there.
Yeah.
But I'd certainly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if you want to ask that of the applicant, I could, that'd probably be a better place than me, so, but that's up to you, so.
Would you like that question asked?
Sure, yes, I would.
Would you, would the applicant like to take the podium and speak to that? I'm sorry. Do you understand the question?
Yes. Yes, we are ready to go. Our building permits have been submitted, so it's, we're ready.
So your building permit is signed, sealed, and ready to go?
It has not been approved at this point, but it is in review, so.
Okay.
But we've, our contractor is ready to go. He's ready to start digging.
Excellent, so we can be confident that we will see action?
Absolutely.
As the weather warms?
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. We're excited about the project. It just seems to have been delayed along the way quite a bit.
Yes, it has, and if I can address some other comments, I don't know if I can...
Well, certainly.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to say, we are really excited about this program. I think the rebate will allow us to reinvest in the building. One of the partners being in real estate himself really understands tenants. It is a tenanted building, so we are investing in a lot of things that you maybe not see in a typical rental building, you know, or we are taking consideration some of, you know, like the noise between floors and whatnot. So we are reinvesting a lot of that money into those little things that sometimes are overlooked, so I think this program is great, and I think it would be really beneficial to us financially and just for the overall project as a whole.
You want to be community partners, is what you're saying?
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's much appreciated. Very well, good.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? Okay, would you read the applicant or the resolution?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Stevenson, that council receives report DCS 18-08, Community Improvement Plan Application, 253 Broadway, and that the 253 Broadway property be approved for the tax increment grant back program and the permit fee grant back program of the community improvement plan related to enhancements of the property at the strategic level, which offers the following growth-related rebates. Years one to six, 100% rebate of the incremental tax increase. Year seven, 80% rebate. Year eight, 60% rebate. Year nine, 40% rebate. Year 10, 10 to 20% rebate, with full property taxes being payable in 2029, and a 5% rebate of the building permit fees. And I just recalled what my other question was, can I ask it quickly? This, the, taxes are still paid to the County of Oxford, is that correct?
Development charges, you mean?
Develop, is it development charges, then?
Through the Deputy Mayor, so the county has a community improvement plan program that mirrors ours, so the county, there's three parts to your property taxes. There's education, which is provincial, the county, and then local. So the county's taxes are rebateable as well. So when I mentioned the number earlier, roughly 300, 350,000, that actually included the county portion, not just the town. And I think that answers your question. Did I miss something?
Thank you.
That's just a question. Counselor Assotain, I think it was just a misstatement. You said 5% rebate of the building permit fee. It says 50, and it is 50, correct?
Yes.
Just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure if you had a different sheet than I did, but it is 50%, okay. All right. Okay, we've got the resolution on the floor. Any further comments? I have a question, is that going to be bylaw? Is that going to be bylaw? This whole resolution is going to be put to bylaw? No, it's not? Okay. All right, we've heard the resolution. All in favor? And all opposed? And the motion is carried. Thank you. Now into the next item on the agenda, in regards to Twenty Vance Drive. Mr. Penshaw, would you give us a presentation?
Again, we have another community improvement plan application, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of council. In this particular case here, the owners of Twenty Vance Drive and the operators of the business in that place, a food processing business, are proposing an investment of about one point five million to expand their food processing business there. Some of the things there, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but certainly they're expanding production lines. They are replacing, and this is interesting from the community, sorry, County of Oxford, Future Oxford Plan, which talks about energy efficiency and environmentally friendliness. They're upgrading to high-efficiency lighting, increasing the energy efficiency of the building, upgrading the exterior, et cetera, et cetera. So and on top of this, the employment will grow with this expansion from about seventy to a hundred. And that will make them actually one of the top ten private employers in the town of Tillsenberg. So that's pretty significant in my mind. And so they have, I will also note that since this this business actually started up in the midst of the recession in two thousand and eight, nine kind of timeframe. So it was a good, a bit of brightness in a dark time, I should say. And certainly since then, the the operators and the the business owners have grown this business, as you can see, and trying to make it a significant concern in the Canadian food processing industry. So we have actually reviewed this as well. And based on the fact that it will obviously improve the how the community looks, it'll incorporate environmental sustainability features and also support growth in a key economic sector, which is food processing for the town. We have only three really food processing companies in the town, and it's a key sector for not just Tillsenberg, but also Ontario and this region in southwestern Ontario. And so we're excited to see it because it is a bit more diversity in an area where we tend to be a lot of automotive parts. So in any case, so we are proposing or recommending as staff that that this be approved at, again, at the strategic level of the of the community improvement plan. And that, and this is supported by a community strategic plan as well, which 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 talks about supporting new and existing businesses and providing a variety of employment opportunities in the town of Tillsenberg, which we think this will do. So again, that's that's our recommendation, and I'll certainly take any questions.
Well, I think it's a very positive asset that the town has to have this because A, they export. B, they do local domestic. C, it's something that will never be online shopping because it's frozen food. So and I think those jobs are very, very secure of what they have. They're not going to become robotic. And for the long term, it's 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 old school, it's something to hang on to, and it's really going to be an asset. We're very safe. And they're good, they're good electrical buyers of of hydro from THI.
That's right, yeah.
And that's.
I will note the applicants are in attendance as well.
I know that, that's why I'm patting them on the back. Thank you for that. Questions from council? It's very similar to the last one. Counselor Essletine?
I I just have a comment, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if that's okay. And and the difference between this community improvement plan application and the prior one that we just heard is that the base value of this project, we're still receiving taxes on half of the, on half of essentially the finished project. So this one I have absolutely no problem with because the taxes are based on the incremental value. Then we're rebating the incremental value, but we're getting the base value. So this one I see as quite a bit different than the last one, so I say yay, this is good. Thank you.
Right, good point. Counselor Hayes?
No, and I certainly support this project too. We've already got seventy jobs, and if you're going to create thirty more jobs, those hundred jobs, it's a big spin off for this community.
Yep.
Good point. Further comments, questions? We have a resolution. Counselor Essletine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Stevenson, that council receives report DCS eighteen dash oh nine, Community Improvement Plan Application Twenty Vance Drive, and that the Twenty Vance Drive property be approved for the tax increment grant back program and the permit fee grant back program of the community improvement plan related to enhancements of the property at the strategic level, which offers the following growth-related rebates. Years one to six, one hundred percent rebate of the incremental tax increase. Year seven, eighty percent rebate. Year eight, sixty percent rebate. Year nine, forty percent rebate. And year ten, twenty percent rebate, with full property taxes being payable in 2029, and a fifty percent rebate of the building permit fees.
Okay. Very similar to the last one. We've heard the resolution. Any questions for clarity? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion is carried. It's great, thank you. Good, we like to hear those good news ones. Partnership agreement with the electrical vehicle charging station. Cefus, is that something you'll carry?
Yes. Sorry, that is me as well. Just allow me a minute, Mr. Deputy, just to catch up to where we are.
Sure. Thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate you here for a resource.
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor and members of council and members of the public. So this this report recommends that we enter into an agreement with the County of Oxford for an electric vehicle charging station in the municipal parking lot directly behind the clock tower that council may be familiar with in downtown Tillsenberg. This is interesting because the County of Oxford had an application into the Ontario Government Program, and Tillsenberg didn't have an opportunity in that program to actually get an electric vehicle charging station. We do have a number of private ones, I should note, in the town, but this is the next level one, if you will. Fortunately, I guess, through good management of the county, they were actually able to come in under budget and then have said, well, we need to get Tillsenberg in there and one other community, I believe Thames for it as well. So this has already been approved at the county level. This council wants to enter into this agreement. And what it would enable would, in the next thirty to forty-five days, would be installation of that that charger station in downtown Tillsenberg. So certainly, I my suggestion would be that there has been some interest at both senior leadership here, but also at the council level by some members of council to have this in the downtown and have this in Tillsenberg. And so this is an opportunity to jump in on a program that's become, I guess, that we've become aware of in the last little bit and that we want to take advantage of in the next little bit. So I'll stop right there, Mr. Deputy Mayor, but if you have any questions?
Well, maybe I'll start. Have you spoke with THI, Tillsburg Hydro, in regards to this, as far as doing the installations and so on? Make sure that we have supply?
Sorry, I can I can address that, thank you.
Thank you.
So both Michael De Roche, the CEO, and also his staff actually identified this location as one that we could do in a relatively quick timeframe. And so this was, my preference actually was to have one right on Main Street. But because of the short timeframe we have to get this installed, that's not feasible. So this has been identified as the most, the easiest location to install. So they've been involved to this point. I know I just saw emails going back and forth today with staff on, you know, preparing if this is going to happen. And certainly they are well aware of it, so thank you.
Is that site subject to be resold for development, where it's going?
Uh, not at this point, no.
No, no, of course, not at this point, but it could be in the future.
That's up to council, I can't.
Because it's down there. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're safe there.
Okay.
Good. My questions. Counselor Stevenson?
Through you to Mr. Penshaw. I'm all for this. I think it's overdue, actually, but in that site, there is a parking lot and it is used. I found that out last summer. It's used almost on a daily basis by some people. How will it affect that, the parking? How many spaces are going to be lost? And will it be subdivided off kind of things?
My understanding, through Deputy Mayor, is that that there'll be two spaces. Actually, there's two kind of ports, if you will, in this charging station. So two spots will be effectively reserved for electric vehicles. So there will be a minor impact in that regard.
Yes.
But again, there are a lot of spaces there. I think that lot does have a fair bit of usage, but it's not one of the most heavily used lots in our inventory, if you will, so.
Okay, so long run, it's not going to put anybody out of their parking that they've been using kind of thing. There's only two spaces.
That's right.
And that's good. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if I could add something. I I did want to mention this as well. If you've read through the agreement, the county has to maintain as the applicant for that program and the owner, if you will, of that program, they maintain ownership of this this charging station for the first four years. And then after that, it actually becomes a town asset. So it will actually become owner property of the town of Tillsenberg in about four years' time. So and that's that's a good thing, I think. I just wanted to let you know so you weren't surprised in the future, so.
Yeah, long term. Counselor Essletine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr. Penshaw. So this charging station, is it coin operated or do people pay to use it? How does it work that way?
Well, through Deputy Mayor Bears, Counselor Essletine, that is, I believe it's mostly electronic payment. So it's typically, there's an app you can add to your smartphone, and you can use a credit card or you use your app. So I'm not an expert on that. Don't quote me on that, please, but my understanding is very digital.
Okay. And would you anticipate signage there to identify that there is a charging station? Because there is a bit of a high shrub thing on the bridge street. Yeah.
We haven't got to that point yet, but that's a very good thought.
Okay, okay. And I was a little bit disappointed to see it here because we have the rotary clock tower parked there. And it was always sort of a recommendation of a certification working group that that park be extended in, park be extended into the parking lot a bit. Is that charging station noisy or will it, like people that might want to sit in the park? Would it be offensive to them at all, to think?
No, no. And and I should note, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Essletine, that this doesn't mean that it has to stay here forever.
Okay.
All right? Certainly four years would be a good thought that, you know, it's probably not a good idea to move it because you're making a certain amount of investment, et cetera. But after that, I would suggest that if anything were to happen with this property, that it could be moved to another spot within this lot quite, you know, easily with some engineering and construction costs, so.
Okay, but it will be marked and signed so people know that they can access it in that location?
Yes, yeah, we haven't figured that part out, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
It'll make a noise similar to an electric golf cart, which isn't very much noise. So that's good. And as far as the card readers, I mean, more and more vending machines inside and out now are going coinless. You use your debit card and some sort of magnetic strip to make your purchase, debit card, credit card, company card, whatever it might be. You can buy your minutes, whatever you might might do. So that's, that answers that question. Further questions? Counselor Rosehart?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Cefus. I I always hate to hear the saying, we have to hurry up and do it, and that's the choice we have. I just feel like it's always a mistake once we've made it. And that is a busy corner. And again, it has the clock tower, it has some nice bushes around it. Nobody's going to see it. Now we're going to put up signage. And that parking lot will be well-used after they start building that other building because they're going to be losing a lot of parking places on the other side of Kelsey's, which is a municipal parking lot. So they will be coming over into this parking lot to be used, and it will it will be a busy lot as it is already, if you go there at night. I know you don't live here, you don't see that, but sorry.
I'm kind of close, all right?
It's a busy parking lot at night. It's full for Kelsey's, right? And it'll be busier once that apartment building goes up because those people are going to need parking as well. So it's all going to flow over into these parking lots. And and your comment, we have to hurry up and do it, and this is what we found. I I find a, I don't know if it's the right place. I I don't know anything about these things, but.
Well, I'm not sure if it's Mr. Penshaw's comment that we better hurry up, but I know the government's always always being blamed for going too slow. And I think in this particular case, if we could be a little more expedient, we can offer the service to the people that's long overdue. Counselor Stevens?
Just a comment. I I've seen these in other communities, and they're not very big. You almost can't see them. They will need signage. But the other thing is if we have to move it a year from now, it's no big deal to find another location, if that does become a problem. I think it's a good spot there now because there is power there. There's a box, what do they call it?
Pedestal box.
Transformer?
Pedestal transformer.
Pedestal terminal right there. That's why they picked that spot. So, you know, it's kind of handy right now, but we can move it if we need to.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, resolution? Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Make sure you got the right one. Yep. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Essletine, the council receives report DCS eighteen eleven, Partner Agreement Electric Vehicle Charging Station, and that a bylaw be brought forward, authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute all documents necessary to establish a charging station in Municipal Parking Lot five B, described as Lot nine four seven, Plan five hundred, except Part One of Reference Plan R forty-one R dash two one seven nine and Part One on Reference Plan forty-one R dash twenty-two thirty-two in the town of Tillsenberg. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, we've heard the resolution. Again, any further questions? Then we'll call the question. All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you, Mr. Penshaw. Rural Economic Development Program Funding Agreement.
That's me again.
Sure, good.
So as council may recall, we, the town of Tillsenberg, actually, Town Council approved an application to the Rural Economic Development Program in, I guess it was September of last year. And we had a number of options in that report. We actually had two options in that report for submission. We, in essence, combined them into what we call a manufacturing acceleration program. And that was an application, made a total application of about sixty-five thousand dollars to that program. So we were actually awarded funding through this program, so fifty percent funding for this program. We also have funding from manufacturers and our partners as well. So the impact to the town, I guess I'm getting the money part right away, but the impact to the town is, the twenty eighteen budget item was twenty thousand dollars, and we've actually shown it potentially is a little bit lower in this program, so seventeen thousand five hundred, plus, of course, the funding from the provincial government and our partners. So this program, really the intent of this program, is to help our local companies, our manufacturers, who are key investors in our community, to to look at their internal processes, to see if software can help those processes, and then also to get these companies ready to look at export markets. And certainly, the focus that we've been pushing, myself and and our partners, is looking at Europe through their recently signed trade agreement. And the idea is that to diversify your invest, sorry, your exports to not just the U.S. We know that about eighty percent of our exports go to the U.S. We need to look at other markets, and I don't need to tell you about what's happening in the U.S. To say that there's probably some need to diversify at any time. So so really, this this program or this report seeks approval from council to enter into that funding agreement with the province of Ontario and to start moving forward with implementing this program. So I will note that, again, with other projects here, that the community strategic plan does identify the need to support new and existing businesses. This would be a program to support existing businesses in the town of Tillsenberg and the area to help, again, look at improving manufacturing and getting more competitive in the global market. So with that, I'll stop. Thank you.
Has the, have the federal government stepped up the plate on this or been required to partner?
No, this is provincial.
It is right now, but hopefully there's some room there. Depends what happens in the global marketplace, whether they they do step up or not. But at least if we get in on the ground floor here, we're planted.
That's what we're trying, yeah.
Questions from council? Counselor Essletine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to Cefus. Cefus, I noticed in the application form itself, then, there's a reference to jobs created and jobs retained. And it says that through this program, we're creating one temporary job and retaining twenty full-time jobs. And I just wondered if you could explain that, like about the job retention thing and and of course, the job created as well.
Certainly. Through the Deputy Mayor to Counselor Essletine. So the job created really was a really, really conservative number. I think if this program is successful, I mean, we engaged ten companies, that's our goal. They're going to see much more jobs retained and much more created. We had to put some numbers in, and frankly, that job created relates to a full-time or an equip, not a full-time, sorry, an equivalent that would be hired by, through a consultant, probably. Okay? So that particular position there is is a consultant position, if you will, that would be supported. But I think that when you look at, if, again, if we're successful, the manufacturing companies that will be involved in this will will support and create many more jobs, so.
And in terms then of retained jobs, so are we implicating here that if we didn't have this program, jobs would be lost in this area? Is that?
Yeah. Through the Deputy Mayor again. So again, if our businesses are not competitive, this is speaking to jobs in our manufacturing companies. And there's, this is focused at our mid-sized, small manufacturing companies. If they're not keeping up with software implementation, with our artificial intelligence, innovate, sorry, automation, which as we know is a huge threat, then yes, there will be jobs lost. Yeah.
So this is a program that hopes to address that in both retaining then and creating jobs? Okay, thank you.
Stay ahead and step ahead. Counselor Hayes?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor, to Cefus. Is this a one-year program then?
Yes, essentially runs to March, the fiscal, provincial fiscal year to March thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
And has, as the money is spent, is there any report back? Do the companies have to report on how that money is actually spent, like on a follow-up report?
Yeah, that that'll be myself reporting on behalf of them, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Essletine, the council received report DCS eighteen twelve, Funding Agreement Rural Economic Development Program, and that bylaw be brought forward, authorizing the mayor and the clerk to enter into an agreement with the province of Ontario to enable funding for the manufacturing acceleration program. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
We've had our comments. Anything further? Last last chance? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Very well. Thanks, Cefus.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Finance, the lease extension for two hundred Broadway. Counselor Rosehart?
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Hayes, that council receive F I N eighteen dash zero four, two hundred broad release extension, and that bylaw four one seven four, to amend bylaw three seven six six to extend the lease for space at two hundred Broadway, Tillsenberg, between the town of Tillsenberg and the CLBLP Tillsenberg Town Centre, Inc., be brought forward to council's consideration. Thank you.
Have questions on this? Counselor Stevenson?
Through you, I guess, to David.
Yep.
How do, in the report, I'm a little unclear. How do the parking lots and the and the standing parking garage fit into this lease agreement, or do they?
This has nothing to do with that. That's a, it's actually interesting to note that we will be having an item coming to a future council meeting about that, about our ground lease, but the, this is simply space rental that we're dealing with here.
Okay, so that's completely separate. We own that, they own this, we rent that, and they rent that from us, basically.
Yeah, the concept is, yeah, they're two separate.
Agreements.
Two separate agreements.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Essletine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr. Rushton then. So the amount of space we're adding to our, we're adding space to our lease as well as extending it. How much space are we adding and what will it be used for?
The, we'll be adding three thousand square feet to about, we have just under, under nine thousand right now. So about a thirty-three percent increase. What the, will there be some rearrangement of where individuals sit in the corporate office? More so what you'll see is the engineering services coming out of the customer service center. That's that's going to be the the biggest change. So they'll be incorporated here. They'll be actually moving into where the current, what we refer to as the annex office is. They'll be moving into that section. Some of those people, you know, Mr. DeLebick has some of his team there, so more of his team will be in that area with him in the new offices. We will have the, some of, some more people moving into there. So, that's, that's the concept. And our record storage has also been located there. So, that's a, we actually have, we're counting up right now, probably six or seven hundred boxes there right now that we blame the clerk for.
Will renovations be required to this space?
Moderate renovations to the space for some, moving some walls and new flooring. I think the flooring is probably twenty years old or more in there, not a condition we want to move into. One of the things that we're asking for and is an accessible washroom. We do not have an accessible washroom in the corporate offices, and so that's one of the things that we've asked for in that.
And is this at the town's cost?
No, this is, the accessible washroom, we haven't determined yet, but all of the other costs are at the landlord's cost.
Okay, and the length of the lease, then?
It extends our current lease, which expires at the end of this year, another five years. And we have a get out of, get out of the deal clause in June twenty, June first nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one. And that was because we are looking at the town hall committee. And as you know, I was quite surprised to learn how long that planning has been ongoing. So, it's not at fruition yet, and we're not going to, in the next, we didn't foresee that we would be in need of moving out of here for the next few years.
Okay, thanks very much.
Counselor Stevenson?
Just a comment that was just made through you to Mr. Rushton. Are all our records now in, are they all going to be in? Because this is a problem a few years ago, I know. They were all over the place. Are they all going to be together now?
That is my understanding that we will have all of our records in one, you know, here in the corporate office. And they'll be, actually, they, the old records, a substantial number of those have been gone through. And the, they're relabeled, they've been identified when they can get rid of, and that sort of stuff. We've actually disposed of a lot of materials through the course of it. And, you know, you can see the transition of what's been happening. And there's still a lot of boxes with dust from being up. And more, more boxes to come. But we'll be putting a shelving system in. There's already a reserve set up for that. Be putting a shelving system in there to allow us to accommodate more. We just have boxes stacked on boxes right now.
Tillsenburg Hydro records too, or are they still someplace else?
No, I don't know. We moved a lot out of that, out of the Messonine. There were six hundred boxes came from there.
I know, okay, thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Hayes?
Just a comment or just a confirmation is Mr. Rushton. I guess we're increasing our rental space by thirty-three percent, but the new owners seem to be very accommodating and only a slight increase, negotiations, okay. It's only a slight increase in our total cost for renting this amount of space, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, good catch. Further comments? We've heard the resolution, all in favor? That's carried. Okay, nothing on fire and emergency services, operations tender for Concession Street East reconstruction? Something Mr. DeLebick wants to talk about?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This project received pre-budget approval at the end of November. And then the January third, we had our public meeting to discuss the scope of work with local residents along that it would be affected in the area. And then shortly thereafter, we were able to issue out the tender. The results were summarized within the report. We did see a little bit of a higher-than-budgeted results, but it's kind of contributed to the high groundwater level in the area when we did the open test pits in February during the tendering period. And if you'll recall, during the budgeting deliberations, we kind of were aggressive in the Anandale parking lot project budget and reducing that, given the efficiencies we would see between the two. Maybe we're a little bit too aggressive in that, so that's also contributing to a little bit of the over-budget results.
Good. Any questions on this? Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you to Kevin, or Mr. DeLebick. The groundwater issue, and I understand that I play ball on those diamonds, and it can be surprising how much water is around there. But if it comes in better, if I'm a contractor and I'm bidding, I got to eyeball it, so to speak, because I'm not sure what I'm getting into because of this water issue. If it comes in better than they thought and things work well, do we benefit from it?
Through the deputy mayor to Counselor Stevenson. That's correct. We do have provisional items within the contract to use Clearstone if we can't use Bedding Stand in cases where there is the groundwater issues. So, there is the ability for us to use that. And if we're not using bedding sand, then there's a benefit to the town. So, that, it's usually equal or offsetting, but that's built into the contract. And if there is savings, we see those as throughout the course of construction, which is why we feel we'll be able to mitigate half of this over-budget expenditure just through the items within the contract itself.
And I just wanted you to comment on one other thing. I emailed you today about it, but just commenting. The county's proportion is very small, seventy-one thousand or something. Obviously, they're not doing main water lines and et cetera. Can you explain what they are doing down there to make keep it so small?
Certainly, through the deputy mayor to Counselor Stevenson. This is more so just a road and storm sewer project to address the water drainage issues of the road base. So, we are installing some storm sewers, which is town infrastructure. There is very little county water main or sanitary work. We're just installing a fire hydrant and bringing up some of the sanitary to facilitate an outlet for the concession building within Anandale Ball Diamonds compared to the very, very long lateral that's there right now. So, there, it's very minor work. It's mainly a town-driven project, which is one of the reasons it's been put on the funding application list year over year, and now we're finally here.
Mr. Rushton?
I just want to speak to the thirty-five thousand dollars that's recommended coming from the asset management plan. And as you recall, council reduced about seventy-one thousand dollars in capital projects. And that money was retained in the asset management reserves. So, that's where this thirty-five thousand dollars is coming from.
Good to know. Okay, any other questions on this? Counselor Esseltine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you to Mr. DeLebick, then. So, the surface of the parking lot for the Anandale Ball Diamonds, will it be paved or what kind of surface are we looking at?
The surface of the parking lot will be a gravelled, a gravelled surface. It will not be paved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Counselor Hayes, you have the resolution.
Moved by Hayes, seconded by Counselor Rosehart. The council receives report OPS eighteen dash oh three, results for tender R F T two thousand eighteen oh oh two, Concession Street East Reconstruction. And the council awards tender R F T two thousand eighteen dash oh oh two to Vucon Construction Limited of Woodstock, Ontario, at a cost of one million seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-six cents, net H S T included. The lowest bid received, satisfying all tender requirements. And the council authorizes the use of up to thirty-five thousand from the asset management reserves towards this project.
I do have a question for Kevin. What about time, starting time, time of year?
Through the deputy mayor to council. We didn't stipulate a start time. We stipulated a construction completion time, which is the end of June. So, if we can get into the ground sooner, given that we don't have to set up temporary water main, we're anticipating we should be in there, depending on the winter season. But as soon as the frost is out, that's when we'll be in.
That's best case scenario. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, we've heard the resolution. Any further questions? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Hayes?
Just a comment, so it should be pretty well done before a lot of ball gets started. So, we'll still have a pretty good ball season after the fact.
That's correct. And we were, my colleague was able to discuss with the ball users what time of year would be the least impactful to them. And we all know the World Series happens in the fall, so it was better that we get this out of the way at the beginning of the season, so.
World Series is going to happen here?
That's good.
That's great. That's right. Okay, we've heard the resolution, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. Okay. I've finished business, staff information reports. Okay, committee reports. A special awards committee, fire strategic planning committee, development committee. Anything from those? Counselor Hayes, resolution?
Moved by Hayes, seconded by Counselor Rosehart. The council receives the special awards committee minutes dated February the seventh, two thousand eighteen. The fire strategic planning committee minutes dated January the ninth, two thousand eighteen. And the development committee minutes dated February the fifth, two thousand eighteen, as information.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. B I A, very similar. They've had several meetings, and they're all brought forward at the same time. Counselor Hayes?
Moved by Hayes, seconded by Counselor Rosehart. The council receives the Tillsenburg B I A board minutes dated January the tenth, two thousand seventeen, February the fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, March the twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, May the ninth, two thousand seventeen, June the thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, September the twelfth, two thousand seventeen, October the tenth, two thousand seventeen, and November the fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, as information.
More properly than that, right? Good point. We've heard our, we've heard the resolution, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Notice a motion. We have here, one here from Counselor Adam, who is not here tonight. And I think out of courtesy with council's indulgence, we'll just move this up to the twelfth of March. I don't think that has to be done by resolution, does it? Make it valid? Okay. Everybody agrees with that? Anybody's opposed? Okay, we'll carry that through. Any new resolutions? Resolutions resulting from the closed session? I believe that's been covered. Bylaws? Counselor Esseltine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Stevenson, that bylaw four one seven three, Tillsenburg procedural bylaw be read for first and second reading.
Okay. Counselor heard the resolution. We'll call the question, all in favor? First and second reading? That's carried. And the next one, Counselor Esseltine?
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Stevenson, that bylaw four one six nine, to amend bylaw three five zero seven, animal control bylaw four one seven four, to authorize a lease extension and amending agreement with S B L P, bylaw four one seven five, to authorize an agreement with the province of Ontario, and bylaw four one seven six, to authorize a partner agreement with the county of Oxford for a vehicle charging station be read a first, second, third, and final reading and that the mayor and the clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the same and place the corporate seal there, one, two.
Councils heard the resolution for those bylaws. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? And they are carried. Very well. Thank you. And they prefer the, confirm the proceedings? Counselor Esseltine?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Stevenson, that bylaw four one seven seven, to confirm the proceedings of council meeting March first, two thousand eighteen, be read for a first, second, third, and final reading and that the mayor and the clerk be and are hereby authorized to sign the same and place the corporate seal there.
Okay. We've heard the resolution, all in favor? And that is carried. We'll do roundtable, items of interest. We'll start with Mr. Cox tonight.
Congratulations to our junior hockey team, the Hurricanes, who ended their season last year or last week. Thank you to the folks who helped organize Family Day, and good luck to the Tillsenburg Thunder, who are in the midst of the playoff season. Hopefully, they get through to the next round.
Sounds good. Thank you. Counselor Stevenson?
Just to follow up to that last one. The Thunder play Saturday here, home game. But what's the date? Third? Be the third? The third. It's eight-thirty, though, so it had to be put back a little bit. There's something on in front of it.
Where are they playing against?
Clinton.
Clinton.
Clinton, and they're one-one going into this. They've, they've.
Friday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Friday and Saturday?
Friday, Clinton.
Okay.
They've won up in Clinton, and they lost here in a tough game. Good game, really good game, but now they go back to Clinton Friday and back here Saturday.
Good stuff.
I do have one notice that I was asked to read from another successful team. This is, I'll just read it as it is. Recently, the Tillsenburg U-ten Ringette Twisters, sponsored by Hurley's Mattress and Appliances, played in the Paris Ringette Tournament and won the gold medal. Going undefeated in tournament play, they turn around and won the championship game by defeating Cambridge by a score of eight to one. So, congratulations to that team. And I just did want to make a comment about Family Day. I was there quite a bit of the day because my grandkids were in town. It was excellent. It was well-run. I didn't see, I don't think I saw anybody except a little kid crying. Everybody was having a really good time. It was efficient, and thanks to Counselor Rosehart for her excellent work on the breakfast in the morning.
And she, and her team. There we go, and the team. Right, very well. Thank you for those comments. It seems to be growing. There's people coming from all over. I mean, we, we're doing, we do Turtle Fest in the summer with a big draw, and Family Day seems to be something. It's not just Tillsenburg people that have discovered this, and it's growing. We might have to double the size of the community center if we got any money for it. All right, thank you. Counselor Esseltine?
Nothing, thank you.
Donna? Nothing? Kevin?
Despite the last week of balmy weather, winter has returned, so just be cautious when you're driving and be mindful of the snowplows. We're there for your safety and ours.
In like a lion, out like a rotarian, right? Right. Counselor Rosehart?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The only thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank all the volunteers that worked on Family Day. Without them, nothing would have taken place there. Thank you.
Good, good comment. Counselor Hayes?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Rushton?
Just wanted to let council know that our application on behalf of the transit to take people outside of town was submitted on time, so that, that has gone in, and we will hopefully keep our fingers and toes crossed and see how our funding comes for that.
Sounds good. I just want to make a little comment. I just got back from the Ontario Good Roads Association Conference last week, and that's why the council meeting was delayed. And something came out of that meeting that, that I really enjoyed listening to, and that's about the driverless car. And we are, we are a long way from having driverless cars in Ontario, but what I want to say about it, we learned as much as we possibly could, what they could tell us, they talked about the partners, this is North America-wide, this is worldwide, and it's coming, and it's, it's something that, we don't know, it's going to be 20 years, or five years, or 50 years, where we're going to be like, like the Jetsons from, from the 60s, where you, you hop in the box, you read the paper, you have your glass of wine or cup of coffee and say, "Take me there." You'll hover, so we don't need roads anymore, and we'll end up there accident-free. So it's, it's going to be a different world, and I'm not sure at my age whether I'll ever see that happen, but certainly it's coming. Now, the interesting part of that, and I always, and that's why I'm bringing this up, I always felt that it was something like your Garmin GPS that you plug on your dashboard and take you there. But there's a little more to it, and it's going to take something like 50 terabytes of data in your community through, like a Wi-Fi system, just to manage the system, so these boxes or driverless cars don't get into collisions with each other, because it'd be similar to trains where you're inches apart and you're traveling at 200 kilometers an hour, and you don't want to be in collisions, because it could happen. And there's, there's wind, there's all sorts of things that they have to work on, and it's going to be a long time. But I remember in the, in the 70s, I bought my first pocket calculator, and I multiplied eight times seven, and then I really didn't believe it, so I had to get out the old crank, because I didn't believe that this technology was actually there. And I, I don't know what it was, it's 1972, I think it was $75, and I was maybe making a hundred a week to buy a pocket calculator. So these things are going to be very, very expensive at the beginning. Companies that are much more advanced than what I am, companies like Google are looking at it, and I, it's all going to fall together someday. There's going to be some, some business casualties, and there's going to be a lot of business wins out of this. But I think what, the reason I'm bringing this up, there's so much data that's going to have to be used, and like I say, at least 50 terabytes. Now, if we know what a thumb drive is, a terabyte is like a package of Jell-O, only 50 of them, then that's how much data would have to be used, and that's in today's technology. And that's just for traffic control, so it's something that's up and coming. But to hear the, the start of this was just, just amazing, and I did have an opportunity, we had our Tillsenberg Hydro meeting this morning, and we were talking about non-regulated revenues, because Tillsenberg Hydro can't make a markup on hydro. But they could make a markup if they were to get into the, this business, and it could certainly offset the cost, and it would be nice if we were community leaders in this sort of thing, maybe not so much in Tillsenberg, but in Oxford. And I know the city of Stratford is certainly staying ahead of the game when it comes to technology, because they know that's, that's where the future is. I think we're, it's in our best interest to just keep up with them, so. So this, this really grabbed my attention to, to see this coming. I don't know where it's going to go, where's it going to stop growing? I have no idea. But where the, where the world of technology has been in the last 25 years, how far we've come, watching a program last night called The 90s on TV, it was on the History Channel, and they said the internet as we know it wasn't introduced until, like manageable by people until May 2nd, 1994. It had been there, the military had been using it, but it was hardly used, and people started using it in May of 94, and it was, it was so archaic compared to today, and where are we going to be in the next 50 years? It's frightening. I don't know where we're going to be. Sometimes I'm glad I won't be around in 50 years, but maybe those types of things will keep us alive, too. We don't know that, so. Go ahead.
Does Mr. Delebi think anything about, will ever have a driverless snowplow out there?
Maybe we can develop the technology where it melts about that far off before it hits around. But if we're, if we're hovering, then we won't have to worry about plowing it away. That's the nice part about it. But how healthy would we be? Okay, with those comments, we have another resolution, tells us what time of night it is, and we're going home. Counselor Esseltine?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Stevenson, the council meeting of Thursday, March the 1st, 2018, be adjourned at 8:13 PM.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Stay around and sign some? Yes, certainly. Are we going to, are we going to sign all the bylaws, and then tomorrow she'll be around for the ones that are events?